All right, everybody. Welcome. Let's call our meeting to order. We'll start the pledge of allegiance. Say now it's going to lead us.
Our pledge is to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
So before we go on to the minutes in the agenda, I'd like to ask you guys to consider a motion to amend the agenda. We just made a mistake. We left the whole part of our normal agenda off. So we would need a motion to add First Election Report, Select Members Report, Public Session, and Executive Session, all before adjournment. I apologize to the public for that mistake.
Move that we amend the agenda to add the following sections: the First Election Report, Select Men Report, Public Session, and Executive Session.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from January 21st, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
Questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next item is approval of the three board meeting minutes from January 21st, 2025.
Move that we approve the meeting minutes at the special meeting of January 21st.
Second.
Discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, for the first time in a very long time, we have all of our appointed positions filled, so good work, everybody. There's no appointments on our agenda, old business will move into new business. And the first item on the agenda is Department of Public Works Supervisor Job Description approved. Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a fifth job description. The Board of Selectmen previously approved four. The four that they approved were general, fleet, grounds, and roads. We've recently filled the facilities position, so as part of the discussion with the union and the town, Krista, our Human Resources Director, came to agreement. The attached job description is consistent with the duties of the job and has been approved by the union. So we bring it to you, we bring it before you tonight so that, one, we can consistently have the job descriptions go before the Board of Selectmen for approval, and also, if it's approved, we want to congratulate Rich Toms, who has been promoted to the facilities supervisor position.
All right. I say it anytime you bring one of these to us. Thank you for the good work. This is stuff that we've been meaning to do for quite some time, so... Any questions by anybody? If not, I will accept the motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the new supervisor job description for facilities as provided in the attached memo from Human Resources Director Krista Schaefer dated January 16th, 2025.
I'll second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an outside council request. Mike did a memo that's pretty self-explanatory. Let me start, Mike, and then Ken at, if you want. By now, I'm guessing most of the community understands that the City Council approved the proposed battery project in town. There are options that we should consider in terms of appealing that decision and other things we might do. I will report, since the decision, I've gotten a fair number, a fair amount of correspondence, both in writing handwritten letters and emails of constituents who are urging us to continue to challenge that decision and to express our concerns around it. There's no reason to read any of them in the record. They're pretty consistent in that. What I think we should do, although it's a little bit unusual, is to consider the motion that's in our backup, which is, I think we, it's nitpicking, but I think we should change one word from approve to authorize. Mike, to select a firm, because there's just some strategy and issues around whether we should proceed and how that might affect who we choose that we need to have in executive session. So to be efficient, what I'm suggesting is that we authorize Mike to do it, get that vote out of the way. We'll discuss it in executive session, the issues that we need to talk about, and then if we concur that we should proceed, the rest of the motion directs Mike to follow Are you all okay with that process?
Yes.
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 Anything else?
No.
Want to have any discussion? Or somebody want to put a motion on the floor?
I will move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the hiring of an attorney slash law firm to assist the town in legal matters related to the possible appeal of the KCE battery project matter, and to direct Town Manager Mike Walsh to execute an engagement letter with the firm that is in the best interest of the town of Granby and further report back to the Board of Selectmen on the progress of this initiative at the February 18th meeting. I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is, should I make Scott read his letter into the record?
Happy to do so.
Because I think most of you know, it's with heavy heart, that we are wishing Scott our best wishes, and why don't you tell him what you're doing? We're going to miss you.
Yeah, no, thank you. So if you would allow me a moment of personal privilege, I would just like to take an opportunity to thank all of the members of the Board of Selectmen and the community. I did inform Town Manager Mike Walsh that I'll be resigning as Town Clerk as the 18th of February. I can't tell you how much, what a privilege it's been to serve the residents of Granby and get to know this community. I look forward to supporting you from afar and cheering you on, but I have ultimately accepted a position with the town of Windsor to serve as their Town Clerk. So...
Good luck. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say, you know, sometimes I can be flippant, but I don't want to be flippant. We're very grateful for all your service to Granby. We are going to miss you. I want to repeat to the public, not word for word, but something I said to Scott in private when I first joined my law firm. In fact, I was a very young lawyer in my first firm ever. About two and a half years in, I had decided to move to another firm. And the partner, who was my mentor, you know, he was disappointed, I was disappointed. It was not an easy decision to make, but he said something to me along the lines of, you know, "I will always, we will always follow your career and celebrate and cherish your achievements and accomplishments." And I truly mean that, Scott, so, yeah, anything we can do to help you, let us know.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, man.
Anything else?
Sad to see you go.
What happens if we don't accept it?
Oh, boy.
I'm teasing. I'm teasing. So, right, there is actually an action item, right?
No.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, the next item on our agenda is related to attempting to choose a proposal and proposed developer for the Kern School redevelopment project. Mike has done a memo for you. I'll let you go in a second, Mike. The memo also includes a summary of the Commission on Aging met. We asked them to kind of give them, if they could, their consensus on which of the two performance they favored, and we also asked them to kind of prioritize in no particular order issues that they want to make sure that we stay on our radar. So the backup includes both of those, two things. Mike?
I'll just summarize really for the viewing public who may not have the memo in front of them. Over the summer, the town of Granby issued a request for proposal seeking interested developers of the Kern's school for the purposes of senior housing. On January 13th, 2025, after a panel reviewed the four developers who submitted, three were invited in, and on the eve of the 13th, two actually joined forces together. So we had two capable developers that gave presentations to both the Board of Selectmen, the Commission on Aging, and the community at large. More recently, in a special meeting held by the Commission on Aging the week of January 20th, they voted in support to proceed to work with New Samaritan Seven Summits in search of an agreement, and they also shared their priorities with us. No matter how tonight's vote goes, I want to assure everybody, this is a blank slate with whoever the town decides to move forward. And what I mean by that is, we are not bound by their proposals, they are not bound by ours, but we will sit at a table and hammer out the best deal possible for what it is our community wants. That will take probably several months, and then it would come back before the Board of Selectmen with an eventual agreement or non-agreement based on the terms of a, you know, a contract. And then once we ink the contract, they would pursue the development. And again, blank slate. I don't know if Kern's will be demolished, I don't know if we will build on it, I don't know what the building will look like, but every step of the way, we want the Board of Selectmen's input, Commission on Aging's input, and we want to arrive at a place where the community is proud of what we do.
So what I think we ought to do is just go one by one and see where you're at, if you have a preference, and if you want to state why. I'll start down there, Mark.
Well, I'm happy to see that we've had multiple bids for redevelopment of Kern's school. I know it's been a topic in front of the board for a lot of years, and if we're making progress on it, I'm in favor of it. I thought both proposals had a favorable use for the property, and I'm going to say that I concur with the Commission on Aging for their selection of which developer to proceed forward with as we define what the building's going to look like.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. This has been a very long time coming, and I thought both presentations were very informative and well-thought-out, but I do think New Samaritan Seven Summits probably gave us a presentation that was more in line with what we're looking for. So I would agree, and I just want to thank the members of the Commission on Aging for all the time they're spending and continue to spend on this project.
I concur. First of all, thank you for the work that you're putting in and your willingness to continue to work with us forward. I would say the same thing. I thought we would do well with either developer, but they clearly had two different visions, and I favored the Good Samaritan Seven Summits for very similar reasons. I think they have more capacity to be flexible, and I honestly think there's going to be a lot of, as we reflected in some of our questions that night, of the proponents, there's going to be a lot of going back and forth to feel if we can even come to an agreement. It's a complicated project, and because they're bigger and a little bit more experienced in this area, they're going to have more flexibility to work with us on some of those key issues, I think. So I'm the same pitch.
Yeah, I agree with you that I think you have more flexibility with those two working together. The one thing that I wasn't keen on was the fact that they were talking about doing more workforce housing, and we were really focused on senior affordable housing. And I'm not sure, I'm not convinced that we necessarily need more workforce housing at this point in time, so that would be an area I would look for some flexibility, or hope we could get some flexibility from them.
Okay.
I'd like to thank the Commission on Aging and their hard work on this, and I think both proposals couldn't have been more different. I, you know, I like the idea of keeping the footprint of Kern's school intact a bit, but I'm not sure the feasibility of that. And I do agree that the Seven Summit proposal probably gives you more wiggle room, though I am a little concerned in lieu of recent events of possible funding, they're going to rely more on, you know, federal and state grants, and we can see that those can be in flux, so...
Yep. Say now, you didn't, did you get to watch it? I don't think you were here that night, were you? Man, I know you had thoughts because you sent me some that night.
I forget what exactly, it goes mostly on other stuff, but I'm just, I'd just add that I'm extremely glad that we're actually doing something with Kern's. I've seen it change over the years from a used structure to more of a storage closet, so I'm just glad we're getting it back in action in some capacity.
I hope the answer's no. You guys okay? You don't have anything to add? All right. All right.
Do we have the opportunity for public comment, Ken, or does that come here?
No, we're going to take action on it, but if you promise not to let me regret it, you can, because you were there that night, right?
Yeah.
And you were part of the deliberations that we received from that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You can come up if you want, real quick.
So I'm probably the dissenting voice in the room, and I just want to have an opportunity to share a few things that I know the Commission heard, but I'd really like to have you all hear. So we have, we've waited a long time, so I'm Deborah Holcomb, I serve on the Commission on Aging, and I live in Granby. We've waited a long time for the opportunity to do something for senior housing here, and I just want to make sure that we're not rushing into what we're doing because it's going to impact Granby forever. And I feel like we conflated the RFP a little bit by having site analysis and design in one RFP. So now that we know what we can do with the property, I'd like for us to decide what we want to do with the property rather than the developers telling us what we should do with the property. So I felt like, I felt that we were being told what they wanted, not what we wanted out of that in terms of design, number of units, things along that line. I'd also like to have the, as we're looking at this, looking at what the impact is on our community services, and make sure that the property covenants and the negotiations include payments to the ambulance and police departments for the increased impact that they are going to see over the length of time that these properties exist. So I'd like to see something above and beyond the property taxes, that there's an annual fee or payment to those properties, and that also would include sewer and addressing sewer. I'd like us to talk about what the goals of the property are and what we want before we decide on who that developer is. So are we looking at increasing the overall population of Granby with residents that are coming to us from throughout the state? Or are we looking at providing housing that provides Granby residents? And the source of funding for these projects will impact who can live in these communities? I'd like the committee, when they're negotiating, to look at what happens when the developer doesn't follow through with their promises that they made for onsite management and services down the road? What recourse does the town have? Will there be a housing authority that residents can take their concerns to? And I'm bringing this up from personal experience that I've had with nonprofit housing that is in an immediate town next to ours, where 30 years ago, the property was in a very different condition than it is today, but as a nonprofit property today, they're no longer able to get grant funding to make any updates or improvements to the property, and so the residents are suffering from that. I'd like us to tour the sites. I drove past one of the communities over the weekend to look at it and could see that people were living robust and active lives in it, but I haven't had the chance to see the other community, to see what, if the developers are delivering on what they promised us. So I'd love the opportunity to tour the sites before the organization, before we as a town make a decision. With that, I'd like to know how potential residents feel about the designs. I do agree that Seven Summits and New Samaritans had excellent presentation skills, but I'm interested in what would be the best build for the committee, for the community, not who has the best PowerPoint and presentation. I'm concerned with some of the Seven Summit, New Samaritan proposals and designs, specifically the three-story building, and the ability to evacuate seniors or disabled who might be on that third floor in case of an emergency, and we know that the battery storage could become a problem in that area. How do you evacuate a large number of people from a third-story floor? It becomes difficult. The developer fees in that proposal are high, they probably shouldn't be, they probably should be less than half of what they've shared with us now, and I'm very concerned about their ability to fund the project using grants and based on the ability to get grants for the community when it needs upgrades in the future, which will happen again because I'm experiencing that. I, there were certainly things about the other developer's property that I thought they could improve as well, but I did feel like as a small developer, we would have something that met our needs and that they would be able to provide us with better service than a larger developer would who is not as locally based. And then regarding the marketplace workforce housing, I would be concerned with us continuing to build rental housing as opposed to giving people the opportunity to own, because owning property is one of the best ways for people to create generational wealth, and by continuing to add to rental properties as opposed to building to, as opposed to building workforce property that could be owned, we're taking a channel away from people. So that's my feedback from the, from the proposals and the presentations and that I shared with the committee, and I appreciate you letting me have the opportunity to share that with you, and I just ask that you consider some other perspectives as you consider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Yeah, I'll say this, I think you fairly summarized some of the challenges we have going forward. Every single thing that you mentioned is something that we will have to work with, whoever we choose on, back and forth, and I think Mike said it at the meeting when we interviewed the candidates, I think some of you said it, some of we said it, but I'm going to say it again, there's a lot of work, whoever we choose, going back and forth to figure out where would that consensus have, because we're not going to get everything we want in the project, nor is the developer going to get everything they want to do in the project, so, yeah, it's, but, you know, at some point, we've got to trust ourselves and move on and begin, but every, every single thing that you said is something we will have to continue to pay close attention to. Any other questions or comments up here?
Just one question. The Seven Summit group, they were not going to pay for the property, we had to give it to them, and the other one would pay us was the proposal. Did I have that right?
Again, I would caution us to assume anything in particular. I think all of those details, based on my feel and my answers to the questions I'm going to show, in terms of, it's hard to get them to say, "We'll pay anything for this project" until we've kind of gotten down to what we're talking about, precisely, right? So you guys were all in the room, and I invite everybody to disagree if you did. My impression and intention is to pick a developer that we think is worthy of going forward with and have all of these things on the table. I think we have some flexibility in how, what we look for there. Of course, they both were trying to answer with the answer we wanted to hear, but both developers said they understood that they would need some flexibility and that there would be a lot of back and forth, so... I'm not sure that fully answered your question, but...
Yeah, somewhat. And the other question I had is, who manages that? Is that Mike's to manage, or is that the Commission on Aging? Or who manages that process?
That's a good question. Mike and I have talked about it, and I think our joint recommendation is we put together a committee to work and negotiate with the developer. My suggestion of the committee is Mike, myself, Abby, all three have been involved from the very beginning, and Gene, the Chair of the Commission on Aging, so they're represented through her. You guys will be represented, obviously, through Mike and I, so we're open-minded to other structures, but that just seemed to be the one that works since, based on how we got here. You want to be on it?
No, I was just asking, trying to understand.
Everybody okay with that?
Sounds reasonable.
All right, I will, it sounds like the general consensus is to try to proceed with the Seven Summits and Good Samaritan proposal, so I will accept the motion with that in
So I'll do it then. I would move that the Board of Selectmen direct Town Manager Mike Walsh to begin with New Samaritan Seven Summits in order to create a development agreement for the Kern School Senior Housing Initiative with an emphasis on the listed priorities as provided by the Commission on Aging and the Board of Selectmen, and further to return to the Board of Selectmen no later than April 30th this year to provide either an update of the progress on the development agreement or an agreement for the Board of Selectmen to consider for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Good work, everybody. Good start, I should say. All right, next item on the agenda is Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some news and notes for the community. First, from the Town Manager's office, the obligation of all American Rescue Plan Act funds was made by December 31st, 2024. That was Phase Two, approximately 1.6 million. The church meetings on 87 Simsbury Road, the United Methodist Church, are ongoing, and possible uses of the building are being explored, so that is productive. The town held the kickoff meeting with GZA Architects, they're the Park and Rec Facilities Master Plan Consultant. Moving over to Finance, Tax Office, and Assessors, on Friday, the grand list was produced by Sue Altieri, and that's been finalized as of the writing it says it would, and it was, though that information has been passed along to Mike Guarco at the Board of Finance, and Kimmy and Mike continue to look at it. There were really three themes that we saw coming out of the grand list. We saw about $14 million of additional growth from Station 280, which was a good thing. However, nearly all of it was reduced by the new method that the state of Connecticut calculates the value of automobiles. That was several million dollars, as well as the new veterans disability exemption that was incorporated into the Connecticut General Statutes. That was about $5 million of value that came off the grand list. We're hopeful that the legislature, and we'll be watching the governor carefully in his address at noon on Wednesday, chooses to send that $165,000 back, which is about what the $5 million equates to. So there was not robust growth in the grand list, which will make the budget process a little more trying. With respect to community development, final inspections are scheduled for Building Six at Station 280. Work on the Granby Center Master Plan with consultant BFJ continues. With respect to the Police Department, the coin challenge, which you may have seen, that is between the Granby Police Department and the high school, was established, and there will be a scholarship for the winner. So the Police Department is reaching out to a handful of folks. They'll judge the coin challenge, and if you don't know what a coin challenge is, it's an opportunity to create a dialogue. Whoever exchanges a coin with one another becomes more involved in that organization. So in this particular case, it would be an officer having a coin to hand over to a high school student, and that begins, there's some pride involved, there's some communication involved, and it's a good icebreaker, if you will. So this coin challenge will have the coins designed by the high school students, and then the winner of the coin challenge will receive, I believe it's a $1,000 scholarship for a post-high school event that they choose. Officer Abelon and Officer Deloy rescued an owl. Many of you may have seen that on Facebook. That was struck by a vehicle momentarily stunned and then ultimately released. I won't go into a lot of detail, but for those people who are interested, there's a number of approximately six or seven crime items that I placed on this particular report. We had one that involved a 29-year-old male who was taken into custody and charged with illegal possession of assault weapons, and that was on New Year's Eve. There's a lockdown at the high school, and then we had some unfortunate folks who were using... using drugs, overdosed, but in both cases were administered Narcan, and all was back to normal. With respect to public works, over 400 Christmas trees were picked up and removed from the curbside. As of today, we've had now nine minor snow events. On January 12th, DPW received a call, a report of a sewer backup in the Bank Street area. Small-town septic was called to remove approximately 10,000 gallons of raw sewage from a manhole. After the removal, a few attempts were made to unclog the pipe that was near Starbucks by the food bag. After having no success, the Simsbury Sewer Department jet truck was called, and what we found is grease aided by NIPs. The small bottles of alcohol were disposed of into our sanitary sewer line, causing the backup. This is the third major backup we've had in about six months, so we know we have to look at that. A letter went out, and because the Board of Selectmen serves as the water sewer authority, I sent out the letter that went out into each of your inboxes, I think, late on Friday. With respect to the library, the renovation is now complete. New paint, carpet, and light in the adult area, in the Fox Meeting Room, plus new flooring in the main desk area, and staff offices was completed. Cosette Library has a new Makerspace technician. We want to welcome Christopher Kerr, who's working hard to bring Granby's Makerspace to the next level. Human Resources, you may not be aware of it, but the town of Granby rolled out something called VCS Timekeeping System. It was tenuous and tedious. It was stressful to both the installers and the users. We continue to provide training and guidance, but this is an automated way to reproduce a formerly manual function. Krista also attended sick leave webinar related to gain a better understanding of the new sick leave law that's in place and how it works and integrates with policies we have in place. Over at Human Services, which includes youth, parks and rec, senior and social, we had the issue of an RFP for concessions at Salmon Brook Park. So anybody who is interested in that, it's out on the town's website. And Scott had a couple of comments related to the digitation of the Clerk's Office, which we want to thank him for over time. And with respect to the digitation, the Town Clerk's Office has also been using the printer-scanner copier, which was bought with American Rescue Plan Act money, to electronically index our older maps. Three report outs. First is on room use. You were gracious enough to pass a room use policy several months ago. We've had Granby 4H, Granby Artists, Granby Land Trust, and the Granby Theater Group all take advantage of being able to use predominantly in the evenings rooms without being charged. So that, that's a good thing. The Aquarian Water Sale was completed. We'll hear a little bit more about that from the Aquarian senior executives in the next couple of weeks. We're just working to get that scheduled on our calendar so Mark and I can ask some questions. And then finally, related to a donations policy that this board generously approved several months ago, I have just some information that I want to pass along. Most folks choose to remain anonymous, but over the holidays, we received 10 different contributions totaling $7,000. Some went to the fuel bank, some went to the Holiday Bank, and some went to the General Social Services Fund. So again, 10 Granby individuals or groups combined together and contributed about $7,000. We received a donation of $8,500 to the Granby Public Library for a possible future expansion, and the individual who passed it along chose that they do not want to be formally acknowledged. Another anonymous donation was $10,000 toward a senior services bus. And we also received from the Dogs Park Group a picnic table with benches to honor in memory of Alinda Powonowski, if I have pronounced that, who was a dedicated dogs volunteer for the past 17 years. She passed away unexpectedly from COVID complications in October, and the group wanted to honor her with both a picnic table and benches. So if you see that, that's where it came from. And then finally, as you were aware, we used as an example when we were compiling the donation policy, but there is a bench granite marble, a rose granite marble, and that will be installed. And the family, it's in memory of their daughter Lynn Boydin, and they want really no official ceremony recognition. Mark and I will attend when the benches are fixed in front of the library. So this is just an example of a considerable amount of generous donors within the town of Granby, and I wanted the board to be aware of that. I get them in periodically. I gather them up, and perhaps once a quarter, once every six months, I'll update the board as to what's happened. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? All right. Next item on the agenda, we'll go through the ones we added. The first is a first Selectman report. I really don't have a report, but just to remind everybody and ask for your patience with me personally, I'm entering that period of time where I will travel a lot for my job. So starting this weekend, I'll be gone a lot. My plan is to be back a couple days at a time around each of our Board of Selectmen meetings. I should be able to attend everyone, either in person, maybe in Zoom a little bit later in the spring. But you don't need to treat me any differently. You can call me or text me anytime, regardless of what time zone I'm in, but I'll be traveling quite a bit over the next couple of months. That's all I have to go on.
Just that I did stop by the library, and that the refurbishment they made and the new lighting and the new carpeting has brightened the place up. So it's almost like a new library again.
Thank you, Mark.
As a result of having multiple grandchildren in the school system, I was able to attend three concerts, two middle school band and chorus concerts, and one Wells Road concert. And I just want to commend the music department for the great job they're doing with our young musicians.
Excellent.
Nothing.
Nothing for me.
Zainab, I know you didn't have your report tonight, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to share how we had the job shadowing day today.
Okay.
So I myself went to Wells Road, and I got to shadow a teacher in a classroom. And I think it was a great opportunity. A lot of students got to be excused from school today so they could go shadow any career they wanted to, as long as they got accepted, of course. And I just wanted to share that was a great opportunity.
Are you thinking about becoming a teacher?
Maybe.
Bless you. Thank you. We need more teachers. Ben?
All right. So just to add on, for Career Day, I also took a slight visit exit from the school. So I shadowed Professor at Trinity College in biochemistry lab, which was very interesting. So also, Semester Two is started. So for seniors, this is it, or this is the final stretch. We just did our final midterms. So that's very exciting because all the final senior events are all coming together. Our graduation is set permanently at June 10th, and prom is also set in May. So everyone's getting excited about those major senior events. NHS is also working hard to work on empty bowls. So they're making a lot of bowls and getting soup and donations and raffles. And then also for sports, I will be tomorrow spending most of my day in, at a track meet for our indoor track conference, conference meet. So we will be competing against all of the local towns in our conference for indoor track. And then also currently, or, well, a couple minutes ago, the boys and girls basketball teams were playing Rockville tonight. So, yeah.
And I know after one of the recent events at the high school, you text me, you're, you're free to share them tonight if you want to.
I just wanted to reach out and say especially thank you to our first responders for the way they handled especially the lockdown. I know it's, it's a major moment for some people because you have to treat a threat as a real threat until you know there is no threat. So just wanted to say thank you, especially to the police for having such a clear response and making it such a timely action so it wasn't a major event.
Yeah, thank you. Can you make sure the chief hears that?
I shall.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is our public session, as we can start with Zoom, I think, tonight. This is start differently. Same rules as always apply. Do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to talk about anything in public session?
Hi, Maureen.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I'd like to say a few words. Maureen, everybody still keep going. I'd like to take the opportunity to wish Scott well. He's helped me on numerous occasions, finding information, getting me familiar with the blogs. And in that process, I've noticed that he has the knowledge, the skills, and definitely the disposition. He's great with the public, and I know Gilgey very well. So I wish you well, Scott. We will miss you.
That all?
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Thank you, Maureen. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, anybody in the room? Anyone want to address us? All right, we'll close the public session. As I mentioned earlier, I think we do need to go into executive session, talk about potential litigation, and so I would take a motion to that effect.
Move that with recess to executive session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, we shall go into executive session. Thank you, everybody. Good night.